So I'm gonna open the meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. Monday evening, December 21st. Currently present for the Board of Regular Members, Ed O'Leary, Steve Belcher, myself, Roy Gardner, our two alternates, Kevin Riley and Sheila Glidden. Rob Lyons just arrived, so we have four regular members present and two alternates. First item of business on our agenda tonight is the minutes. Do we have minutes of November 16th, 2020? What's your pleasure with those minutes?
We'll approve the minutes as printed.
So we've got a motion, Riley, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Riley. Second, O'Leary, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all six members present and voting. Okay, we have no bills at this time. Next item on the agenda is Speedway Park LLC. So we have two legal problems with this application after extensive discussions with Town Council. He's given us recent clarification on the attendees at the meeting and who's allowed to vote. As it currently stands, based on case law, according to that discussion, only members who have been at all sessions of public hearings associated with that special permit, provided they have missed no more than one session of that public hearing, will be allowed to record a vote. Given that fact and the current makeup of the board, it's not physically possible to get a five-member supermajority vote in favor of that application. So therefore, no matter how we voted, we wouldn't be able to record a legal supermajority vote, five in favor, none opposed, or five in favor, one or two opposed. Second problem is Town Council has also advised us that, given the drawings that have been submitted for the application, we are gonna require that the applicant take one of two avenues to get that approved. Number one is to file the application or refile the application as a modification to the existing special permit that was previously approved. Since where do we approve the special permit as it's currently applied for? We would actually have a diagram and a drawing which conflicts with the actual already-recorded special permit at the Registry of Deeds. He has said the only way we can fix that is to issue a superseding special permit, which would take that special permit into account by issuing a superseding special permit that recognizes the fact that the intent is for the entire site to be contractor bay warehouse type buildings. So given that, I have to ask that the applicant, well, we have two options. One is that the applicant asks to withdraw the current application without prejudice to refile. The second option would be to record a vote tonight, which would be to deny the special permit because of the problems we've come up with. So I'll leave that up to the applicant to determine what he wants to do. He's certainly free to talk to Town Council if he wants to, but...
Just the parking, just the parking issue.
They submitted a new plan.
Yeah, we were unaware of any of this until...
That's, we've had a, there was some discussion at our previous meeting about apparently some confusion over the fact that we had received previous guidance that as long as all members were present, that recorded the vote, were present at least one session of the hearing. And they indicated they had read the materials thoroughly, so they understood what we were doing, that they could therefore record a vote. Town Council has since corrected that to indicate that, based on further case law that he's seen fairly recently, it's actually the inverse of that. They can only miss one special permit hearing to be able to record a vote. I apologize for that. I have always been under the assumption, since we received that advice some ten or twelve years ago, that that was still the current advice. The other part, which I asked him to offer an informal opinion on, is whether or not we could keep that existing special permit there with the use as a holistic medicine office building when we have a plan in front of us that clearly shows something different being built on that site. He said pulling a building permit with that prior special permit in place would create a problem in the building inspector's office. So his strongly suggested that we offer an opportunity to withdraw without prejudice so it can be resubmitted immediately.
Yep, I think that makes a lot of sense, Roy.
So, so given that, I'll ask that the Planning Board put a motion on the table to accept withdrawal without prejudice upon receipt of a written request from the applicant.
So moved.
So we've got a motion, Belcher, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, Belcher, second Lyons. Further discussion on the motion?
My only discussion is, back in October, there was a final action taken by the Board, in my humble opinion.
We understand that, and I did ask Town Council a little bit about that.
Yep.
His feeling was, given the fact that the Board as a whole left the issue open until we could get some additional items clarified, that I think in any case, that vote included the "without prejudice" terms, so I don't see any way, you know, why, I mean, the intent was to allow him to come back with an approved form, an approved application that came closer to meeting the requirements and the special permits in terms of planned use, best use, and all those other kind of verbiage that we wanted to see. So I don't see that allowing him to withdraw would really impact that at all. So, anything else? Anyone else? Okay, given that, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor of allowing the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, which we would officially put in place upon receipt of a letter that we would file with the town clerk indicating so and provided by us from the applicant. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
So we'll show that as one, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, one opposed. Because the subject matter of that is a special permit, I'll consider the alternate votes to count on that, so it'll be five to one in favor, allowing applicant to withdraw his application without prejudice. Okay, so, Patrick, if there's any questions, feel free to give me a call, and if you want, I can put you in touch with Town Council if there's any, any legal questions you wanna try and clarify.
No, we'll definitely reach out before we refile, Roy, to make sure that there's no hiccups.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a 7/10 public hearing for Robert D. Graham for the residential property on 80 Oak Street. The application before us is a three-lot residential subdivision. All right, who has a copy of the legal ad? Do I have a copy, or do you have a copy? I just have the Form B and the plans, it might be.
I don't have it either.
Yeah. Let me look under the hearings tab, is there something in there?
No. I probably have nothing.
We'll find it eventually, Mike. Okay, since our Board Secretary's not present, I'll go ahead and read the notice of public hearing to open the public hearing. It's Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board, notice of public hearing. The Planning Board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 21st. Originally, it said 7th, but we had to postpone, obviously, to tonight because of a conflict with election night. So, December 21st, 2020, at 7:10 PM, in the Town Office Building 175, Central Street, second floor conference room. The purpose of the hearing will be to review a definitive subdivision plan called Hidden Oak Estates, a three-lot subdivision. And the application and plans have been submitted by Robert Graham, owner-applicant, and prepared by Michael J. Kosker and Associates. The subject property is located on the northerly side of Oak Street and consists of approximately 3.107 acres of land. The zoning district is Residence 1, and the parcel is shown on East Bridgewater Assessors Map 116, Lot 5, being located at the address of 80 Oak Street, where, by the way, there is an existing house presently at that address. The Planning Board pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-T, and the East Bridgewater Subdivision Rules and Regulations seeks public input relative to this definitive subdivision. The plans are on file with the Planning Building Department, and can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 noon. If I could, for the record, Mike, name and who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Michael Kosker, I'm a registered engineer and land surveyor in Commonwealth of Mass. And I'm here representing Mr. Graham and at 80 Oak Street, East Bridgewater, in his endeavor to subdivide the property. Is this the best place for the Board and for anybody else involved, for seeing the plans, or do you have them all in front of you?
That's probably, yeah, we have reduced versions in our binders, so I think probably that's about it. Maybe you could turn it a little bit more this, well, maybe it's all right where it is. Why don't you just, I can see it fine, I think most of us can see it fine.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, Mike, for everyone's information, this is a subdivision plan, so under the subdivision rules and regulations, only regular Board members are allowed to record a vote. And as I said earlier, there's four regular members now present. Require a vote of four in favor, none opposed, to be approved tonight. And given that, I'll let you proceed, Mike.
Okay, thank you very much. Sheet number one of the plans basically shows the, is the lotting sheet showing what we would do.
Hey, Mike, Mike, you gotta speak up.
Showing what we would like to do to subdivide the property. There is a cul-de-sac with a 50-foot radius. We have a lot presently on Oak Street that without the radius, the shown radius easement, it would be 215 feet, .23 feet of frontage. With this radius and a radius on the other side, we didn't wanna be presumptuous and feel that the Board would approve that, but this would qualify as a Form A lot, so if the Board feels that it wouldn't be part of the subdivision due to the radiuses, we would be more than happy to submit a Form A plan for just this lot, showing this lot number one, 35,000 square feet.
So Mike, let me answer that right now, just for clarification to everyone, and that is, under Mass General Law, it's a Form A process, works forward to its approval, not required plan.
Yes.
Requires that all lots shown in the plan meet all three criteria under the A and R standards. And that is that all lots must have frontage on an acceptable way. So it meets that standard.
Yes.
But the other two don't.
Correct.
And all three lots have to have frontage on an acceptable way for any of those three lots to be considered a Form A.
Yes, I was just saying for this particular lot.
That doesn't have frontage, that frontage legally under Mass General Law belongs to 80 Oak Street.
Okay.
So until such time as the roadway is physically constructed, to the point where it's bonded by the Planning Board, that lot can't be released.
Okay.
So all three lots will have to be under covenant based on Mass General Law.
Understood.
Okay?
Understood.
Okay, you can go ahead and proceed, if you will, Mike.
Moving on to what's proposed, is lot number two, which is 49,399 square feet, or 1.13 acres, is the house that is 80 Oak Street. On a, on the next plan, I'll show you how, you know, the existing conditions are. But the first sheet is the lotting sheet. And then the third lot would contain 35,695 square feet, or .82 acres. The frontages are derived from the proposed cul-de-sac. We had Ken Thompson put out and delineate some wetland flags of the bordering vegetated wetland. We showed the 50 and 100-foot buffer zone. We're hoping that lot number three, in its final design, will not need to go before the conservation and that things can be put outside jurisdiction. However, you know, the wetland line is shown that none of the impacts of the roadway as proposed would be within 100 feet of the bordering vegetated wetland. So that'd be sheet one of four. The next sheet, and two of four, shows basically the current... Right now, 80 Oak Street, access is, as shown in blue here, there is a large, bituminous turnaround here around the nice landscaped island. The topography of the site is 110 up in the, you know, would be the southwest corner, and down to the northeast corner goes down to 92, to the northwest 99, and slopes up from 110 to 106 in a easterly direction. Present...
So in simple layman's terms, Mike, everything starts at the high point that's at the, at the southwest corner?
Correct.
And goes kind of diagonally across the lot?
Yes.
To the low point on the northeast corner?
To the rear, some of this goes off towards the easterly, is the drainage pattern, sir.
Yes, the way I look at this, though, with that little crown, what, 130, 140 feet off the left-hand side, there, everything from, to the right of that all goes to that back corner, and everything from the front?
Yeah.
Pretty much goes to the back corner.
Yeah, it all goes towards the subdivision in the rear. Presently, the, it's an overhead electric situation, starting from pole number six at the street, going to a pole here, and going to the existing dwelling at number 80. There is a town water that also goes to the rear there. Eventually, what we'd like to do is go overhead by having National Grid give us a plan as to where they feel the pole could be located outside of the layout, which I'll show you shortly, the hammerhead layout, and probably a more desirable place would be often here somewhere where a good service, 80. And the lot number three, and the lot number one, which would have face Oak Street, would come in off of pole number seven or pole number eight.
Okay, so based on where those poles are right now, though, virtually all of the poles that are on the property would have to be moved.
Yes, there's one.
There's only one there?
Yeah. Wait a minute. No, I'm sorry, there is two.
There's at least two.
Two, there is two. So those would have to be relocated. The poles are fairly old, and I don't think that, you know, there would be an issue in...
So to clarify for everyone here, you're asking that we waive the requirements of underground utilities?
Yes, sir.
Directively by saying you wanna have National Grid propose a...
Yes.
Above ground layout.
Right. Now, as far as the layout of the roadway, the turning radiuses, with a 40-foot wide roadway and 18 feet of pavement, easily, you know, make it to the edge of the pavement on Oak Street. The cul-de-sac would come in, culminating in a hammerhead type situation where on both sides, and at the rear, there would be infiltration trenches to take care of the stormwater up and including the 100-year event. And back at 80, we're proposing a roof infiltration system, and also the new house with, on lot number one, sorry. Lots one and three would have infiltration systems for new construction. House number 80 is existing. We would utilize this pavement here, as you can see, the hammerhead would incorporate the circular driveway that's already there. And to go to lot number three, it would be just extending in the northerly direction to a proposed garage on the right-hand side, which, you know, it's not cast in stone, but pretty much, it seems to lay out pretty well that way. Perk tests were done in the presence of the Board of Health. Test bits were done here, four of two of which were perked. These were probably 10 to 12 minutes per inch. The soils here were a little bit tighter at 30 to 40, and so we have a couple of propoloceptic systems there. Couple test bits were done originally to the side here, where there was some thought about running this drainage to the rear here, but this seems to be a better situation as far as infiltration and so forth along the sides of the hammerhead accessway. Here in the cross-section use, we would come up at 3% for the first, I think at 75 feet, and drop off to the back where, you know, as shown before, this area here tends to slope towards the road presently in the existing topography. So there's the proposed infiltration trench, I think it's two foot, two foot deep, five foot wide. And that would show up on the next plan, where there is a cross-section of the roof infiltration system for lots one and, one and three, lantern. And in the cross-section of the road, 40 foot wide, nine-foot traveled lanes, that would leave 11 feet on each side. Plenty of room for grass drift and infiltration area. Here is a cross-section of the trench, five foot wide, 24 inches on the top. It would be in a cul-de-sac where it would give it some volume. And here are the elevations of the 100 through the two-year event. Typical service connection, and some notes about dust control, infiltration areas, any additional requirements that we would ask of the contractor, and snow storage. And that's all I have, is four sheets to talk about. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. I did wanna point out that on the plan that was put together by the current zoning, this could be 215 feet of frontage, and on the back, it could be an estate lot of, you know, 40 feet where it has in excess of 80,000, or is it 80 or 88,000?
Eighty-eight, I believe.
Eighty-eight. We have 100,341. So, you know, it's just the one lot, lot number three, that we're looking to create out of this 18-foot driveway. And as you can see, the house number 80 and lot number three would be quite a distance off of the existing roadway. So we're hoping that the Board would look at this application favorably.
So I'm not exactly certain what that last comment was pointing at, with the, you couldn't get a single estate lot, I believe?
Yes.
The logistics look okay, I have to see it on paper because of where the house is physically located. The easiest thing, Mike, is to make the existing house the estate lot and the remaining land the new lot.
Right, here, and the rest of this would be the estate lot. So all we're trying to say is that the current frontage on Oak Street plus an estate lot, we're looking to subdivide and just create one additional lot. So in essence, you have an existing house, and you have somewhat of a Form A, let's say, and so all we're looking for is a third lot.
Okay, understood. So question, I assume again, based on the plan that's even filed, you're asking for a waiver for the, from the catch basin and piping type of drainage in the road?
Yeah, there are...
Potential problem, I'll just point out right now before we hear, basically from the Highway Department, but they've been, let's say their response to a couple of other subdivision plans that propose similar?
Mm-hmm.
Has been extremely negative because those, for all intents and purposes, are almost impossible to maintain over time.
Okay.
Catch basin, manhole, I understand you could argue to some extent that, you know, that those aren't as environmentally friendly as the roadside infiltration systems, but there are many towns around us that have some roadside infiltration systems that have only been there for a short few years that are already having difficulty with them.
Mm-hmm.
Especially because people continually, because there's no curb typically on those, people pull over and park on top of them repeatedly.
Well, that's why we...
Trucks pull over and park on top of them. I'd have to, I'd have to just note that we'd be expecting a comment back from the Highway, the members of the Highway Group of the DPW before we were to consider waiving the catch basin, you know, manhole catch basin system.
Okay, understood. You haven't had any comments to this point, this evening, I take it?
Not, on this particular plan, we haven't received any feedback yet that I'm aware of from the, from the various departments. I will note that in a previous plan where there was a, let's call it an environmentally sensitive roadside collection system without catch basins and manholes, we declined to accept that and require them to go back to, I'm sorry, the environmentally sensitive roadside collection types. We required them to go back to catch basins and manholes, again, because the overall maintainability of those is... Again, because the overall maintainability of those is very difficult, especially in the wintertime. What happens is the snowbank, the snowbank on the roadway tends to build a berm and the water tends to run down the berm to wherever it goes, which typically is not in that environmentally sensitive roadside, you know, drainage system. I actually took a tour through, just recently through a local area after the snowstorm that has all of those, a combination of both underground infiltration systems as well as some open swales in between sections of underground infiltration system. And right to the edge of the road is solid snowbank from beginning of the road to the end of the road. So my expectation is Wednesday or Thursday, when it rains, the people at the end of that subdivision are going to have a major problem because the water's got nowhere to go. But anyway, we'll take that under advisement and we'll ask for some feedback from the DPW. And given that, I'll ask any members of the board. All members of the board are free to ask questions. The only restriction you have is you can't actually record a vote when it comes time for the final approval vote, okay? So that being said, I'll go to the board, see if anybody has any questions.
I just didn't see the formal note here asking for the waiver on the underground utility.
You're probably right. And it is shown there's underground in the cross-section. You're absolutely right, so we would humbly like to add that to the list of the proposed waivers.
I'm having a tough time reading here with one working eye, but the... Is there a waiver on the sidewalk, too? Do you have the reduction in the payment? Is that written in there?
Probably not, but we would respectfully and humbly ask for that waiver also. Thank you.
Yeah, let's clarify that just to say you've got a fair chance of getting all the waivers covered. I see at least four waivers, the first being the underground utility, second being waiver to the manhole and catch basin drainage system, third being the waiver for the sidewalk, and the fourth being the waiver requesting that in lieu of construction of a cul-de-sac, you allow the road to end in a Hammerhead turnaround as shown in the plan.
Right.
So right out of the gate, I see those four. So those could either be added to a sheet on the plan or in an addendum letter, depending on how you want to handle that.
Right, I have some of the requested waivers. I think a couple that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, are in fact noted, but the list is not complete on sheet one of four.
Okay. Yeah, so given that you've got some of the waivers listed there, why don't you add whatever additional ones you need to go and put them in the same requested waivers box? I missed that as well in the fine print, so. Okay, any other questions from the board? Anyone here in the room have any questions? Yes?
I live at sixty-two Oak, or I abut eighty Oak. I, too, looked at the drawings and the drainage for that roadway clearly would fill up with water. My house is, was built in eighteen-twenty's. So every time it rains, you get a little bit of water in the basement. These would be bridge water, East Bridge Water. And I know for sure since he's going to put that road right on the property line that that water from that roadway is going to come onto my property. Now, I just spent over thirty thousand dollars to upgrade my septic system. And I know the soil content there because we did a prep test along that wall, near that wall. And a lot of that soil is heavy in clay. So that, those cul-de-sacs are going to fill up with water and the only place that water can go is onto my property. I clearly don't agree with what the drawings, how they have them laid out, particularly with the drainage.
Comment noted. Anyone else here in the room? Yes?
Yes, I have a question, same concern as he has.
You have to have a name and address, please.
Martin Coligan, I'm over at five Victory Way. I have a concern, too, with the water because it looks like he's putting the water from the houses out of the ground, the filtration system. And he has the same concern, all that water, when that road was put in seven years ago, there was a drainage system that was put in. And all of it goes over towards two houses, mine, one of them, and number five, the other one. And then it drains off into that wetland, into the wooded area. And what he plans on doing is putting that water under, what I got from the picture is the houses have their own filtration system with the downspouts that got to go in. And then he's saying the roadway, too, is not going to have a catch basin. And the system that was put in on Victory Way, oh, this is four pipes that the water goes in. It goes into a culvert and it's retained here, retention area. And then all the water gets drained out into the woods, out into that direction. And my concern is, you know, there'd be more water coming down that hill. It naturally flows that way anyways. By taking, now you disturb the area where it's going to go. And I think there is more planning on what to do with the water, how to mitigate it. His concern, my concern? But also, I have a question about the road width. The road is, actually doesn't meet the standard road width?
The road width that meets the standard width, he's asked for a...
It says it's only nine, it's going to be forty feet. He's making it ten feet smaller?
The layout is forty feet. He's asked us to waive the paved width to eighteen feet since it's going to be limited to a three-lot subdivision.
Okay, I mean, is that allowed on the...
Typically, yes.
Okay.
Since the only traffic that road will be carrying is it...
Those three houses.
...head into two houses. One of the houses is going to probably be accessed right off of Oak Street.
Okay, okay. I just thought, because with the cul-de-sac, you're concerned with the DPW power and with the cul-de-sac is actually smaller, the circle is smaller?
Again, that's one that we don't, haven't got the feedback yet from the Highway Group and the DPW, but we will be getting feedback from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, can we have a name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Milton Morris, fifty, maybe circle of Bridge Water, have business here. I'm here on behalf of Bob Graham, the owner of the property. Just wanted to add a couple of quick things. One is the, I think Mike did a good job with the drainage. My comments on that is that the, there is a street front lot that will obviously have a driveway going back out into Route fourteen. Currently, lot two on the plan is Bob Graham's house. And we're utilizing his entire current driveway right off of the Hammerhead. So there'll be no maintenance or impervious material created on Bob's house. So there's no additional impact from that. So the only additional impact is from the one street that's going into the one house. Traditionally, we used to, I don't know your subdivision on Victory, but we used to take the downspouts and let them shoot out on the lawn. We're having them go down into infiltration in the ground, which I think is an improvement on what is that. And the final thing I'd say is that I don't know where the board has been on roadways like this, but my experience has been that they're privately maintained by the owner that's there, not by the DPW.
No.
Okay, so you have the DPW maintain those?
Any lots more than one, any subdivisions with more than one lot on them are standard in East Bridge Waters, those we built are standards in the subdivision rules and regulations and be accepted as a public way.
Okay, I wasn't familiar with that. It's different in different towns, so my apologies on that.
In light of what he said, Mike, I'd ask a question to you and you could figure this out if you could prior to our next meeting. And that is if you could get the total square footage of impervious area in the existing driveway, which would, I believe, as Mr. Morris said, would basically, would be roughly the same impervious that you would put in when you built the roadway. Could you give us a mathematical total of how much impervious material you're adding for the pavement you're adding for the roadway versus how much pavement is existing in the current driveway?
Well, what we did, Mr. Chairman, is some drainage calculations dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. And we balanced the pre, the post. So the square footages are, you know, accommodated in the drainage report. But I will try to take them out of here because it is, you know, a little lengthy and, you know, it's a...
Yeah, if you can extract just those, the numbers of square footage existing driveway versus square footage of pavement for the new roadway?
Yes. Because as you see right here, if this was cut off somewhere in this location, this is what eliminated. Now, true that the house on lot number one would have a driveway, but that driveway would be draining towards Oak Street.
All right, so if you could provide that as well, that would be appreciated. Anyone else here in the room have questions? Back to the board, anyone on the board have questions at this point? All right, I'm going to continue this public hearing, given the number of outstanding issues. I'll tell you one thing while Pat's here as well, but we're going to adopt a policy officially and we'll probably do that at our next meeting. We're going to close all public hearings no later than the end of the second session in a public hearing to avoid the difficulty that we get into with the newest interpretation of state law in terms of attendance that we've been given. I think you were here when we discussed that earlier in the evening that...
Yes.
For public hearing items, it's more difficult, obviously, with special permits because of supermajority requirement, but for all public hearings before the Planning Board, which by definition is subdivision control and special permits, means that members who missed more than one public hearing, regardless of how many additional public hearings they attended of the sessions, are ineligible to record a vote on that matter. So we're going to do our best to close all public hearings after the second session in part because the intent of a public hearing is to allow the public, the residents in the area, abudders and so forth, to come in and tell us what their concerns are. It's our belief that once we've had at least one hearing and potentially two hearings on those subjects, that the cross-trading or whatever you want to call it compromising that we have between the applicants to address those issues that have been raised. And there's really no need to continually rehash those. So that's just a kind of a heads up to let everyone know that we really want to avoid that problem in the future, so.
So I understand what you're saying also, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, the onus would be on me to make sure that all of these things are on the plans and be ready to talk about what the situation may be for the next meeting. And that also being said, anything that, you know, the DPW might come up with would be appreciated so that, you know, it...
I'll actually contact them directly to make sure that we have a response in a relatively short time to, so that in fairness to you, it gives you some idea of where we think we need to go. Okay?
Yep, we'll try to work it out expeditiously and make sure that we try to cover all the bases.
So given that, I'm going to entertain a motion that we continue our public hearing until the first Monday in January. There's actually going to be a caveat to that, too, because given where we are in our statewide health situation, we're not sure exactly whether we'll be allowed to hold a meeting at that point. Technically, the town hall is closed to the public until later than our first meeting in January, but we've given it, been given at least tentative authorization to hold that meeting. It's possible, given the way the rules are right now, that that authorization may be withdrawn between now and then, so. But for right now, we'll consider that we'll go to the first Monday in January, which, thought, the fourth. So we'd set a time, a motion to set the date to January fourth, seven, ten p.m. for continuation of this public hearing. Can I have a motion to that effect? I have a motion, Belcher? Second, do we have a second? We have a... A second, O'Larry? I'm going to be stuck on whose name I should put the O in front of for weeks, months. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Not voting.
Okay, for the record, we'll say Kevin O'Reilly and Sheila Glidden did not record a vote on that. We're still working on more, better confirmation of what you can record votes on. We know you can't record a vote on the approval, but we'll continue to work on that with Town Council. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time this evening, members of the board. Thank you.
I'm going to raise a question that I think we've been beating this around repeatedly now for many years. But I think I should, at this point in time, I think I should entertain a motion, if someone is willing to make one, that we ask the applicant for Celeberti Realty LLC to withdraw both of their applications for special permits for the properties at North Bedford Street. And once Conservation has made a final determination of what they're going to allow the site to look like, for them to refile that special permit application with a plan which reconciles correctly with Conservation Commission's final determination.
So moved.
Second.
So we've got a motion, O'Reilly, second, Belcher, further discussion on the motion?
That was second, no, we got, no, that was...
Okay.
You jinxed yourself.
Motion, Riley.
Just that.
Second, Belcher.
There we go.
Any further discussion on the motion? I think it's fairly clear where we think we need to get with this, that we know he's going to have to file based on where he's going with Conservation, a plan that doesn't look anything like the one we have now. So it seems kind of absurd to hold this open and it's not fair to the abudders. It's not fair to anyone else.
In addition, the membership of the board's changed significantly since we first looked at it, so.
Yeah, I was going to get to that, but we're in a...
Sorry, yeah.
We're in a flip the tape delay here. And because the membership of the board has changed and based on our recent guidance, there's no way we could potentially record a vote of a supermajority vote, five in favor. So in fairness to the applicant, I think we need to do that, so. All, any further discussion on that? All members in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're going to show that as unanimous vote of six members in favor. That includes the two alternates, this is a special permit subject. If you would draft a letter and get it to me, I'll do a quick proof and we'll get it off to the applicant. Okay, I think we can do this one very quickly. On our 2021 Planning Board meeting schedule, I think we intend to meet the first and third Monday of every month, with the exception of those Mondays that are legal holidays where the town hall is closed. I think as we already know, and I should mention this again, if perchance we end up with a town meeting scheduled on a Monday night that coincides with a Planning Board meeting night under state law, we cannot meet that night. Town meeting under state law takes precedence over all other town board and department meetings. So we don't know when those are going to be exactly, so for right now, it's first and third Monday every month, exception of official legal holidays. And as we always do, when we get there, depending on what our workload is, we'll discuss whether or not we're going to have only one meeting in the summertime, i.e. July and August. So that being said, if we could entertain a motion in a second to set the 2021 meeting schedule as I just described it.
So moved.
So we've got a motion, Riley?
Second.
Second, O'Leary.
Real trouble.
I got it right that time. Second, O'Leary. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as a six in favor, none opposed, unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plan, Central Street, proposed by, it's actually a joint proposal, but one of the applicants is ADGA Realty LLC. The other, I believe, is Ritter Generations. Is that the correct title?
An assortment, yes, it works.
Okay. So this plan, and I asked it to be filed as a preliminary plan, it's, basically speaking, it shows a string of Form A plans along Central Street on that portion of land that was recently auctioned off by the town. I did have a discussion, a brief discussion with the applicant's engineer. God, is there a small version of that plan in the book? Yep.
I got it right here.
You got it, I got it. No, my tab is empty for that.
Statement to the Juan B forms.
Mike, there's nothing in my tab all day.
I did that on record before, that's the tab.
Roy, you want full title?
I can. So just for everyone's benefit, I did ask that the applicant's engineer review the possibility of taking the existing roadways that appeared on the ancient pre-1900 Hanson Land Plan to make sure that the roadways, there was space left for those roadways to intersect with Central Street to within 15 degrees and 90 degrees, so that they can meet the standards for NHSTA, I believe it is, for safe intersection, so. In that being said, I'll let you go ahead and douche yourself, if you would, for the record, and then go.
Patrick Rar from PMP Associates, requesting a plan for ADGA Realty Trust. So to address your concern there, Roy, the first neck left into the remaining land, which is shown as the remaining land of ADGA, which is 15.403 acres between lots four and five, you can see that we left a way in to that property there. Those property lines were adjusted so that now that, set alive, that roadway would deflect about 10 degrees off a radius.
Okay.
And then, as we move further to the north, between lots eight and nine, there is another one. That is radial to Central Street, so that is perpendicular
Okay.
At 90 degrees. So I believe those were the two items you were concerned with, and we did address them.
Okay. Okay, so there's a bunch of background stuff we're working on here. I think you're at least in part aware of that. We're trying to sort through some conflicting legal information as to how we handle the language in those ancient deeds cut back in the 1860s, 1870s, that effectively gives all landowners within the posse, all landowners within the land shown on the Hanson Land Plan, effectively unlimited rights to use all roadways shown on the Hanson Land Plan. Now, we know legally we have a right to approve a plan of which the landowners themselves propose moving those roads, provided that those new roadways meet requirements of subdivision rules and regulations, number one. And number two, that those new roadways do not deprive any of the third-party landowners potential future access to roadway access onto one of those public ways. So we can't, effectively, we can't approve a roadway that would bypass and landlock a piece of land which is owned by a third party, which currently has existing frontage on one of those paper roads. As it currently stands, without getting into the legal details, we have an attorney who's working for, I believe, a title insurance company who goes a little further than that and says, his opinion is that they actually need a signed document from all of the individual landowners relinquishing those rights. And that document, as I understand it, would include a buy-in from the town that the planning board would not, in fact, approve any roadway that did not guarantee access to all of the third-party, if you will, owned posses. Since the majority of the land is part of the dual application, if you will, in front of us, or the dual ownership application, by signing that application and presenting to us, you've effectively said you're willing to do it this way, which is the way it's supposed to be done in the opinion of our legal counsel, but we're trying to make sure that we don't get in a position where a whole bunch of lots get hung up because someone decides they're going to file a complaint in court that their rights weren't protected. And that there's at least one third-party owner outside of the Ritter properties and the ADGA properties that's within this perimeter land. That being said, I don't see any reason why if this plan is filed as a Form A plan, which you have every right to file it as, and you've reserved areas that would allow you to put roadways in which would meet current roadway standards for intersections with existing streets, which is the primarily, primary thing we'd be worried about at the Form A level, then I think that this plan works as a Form A. It also, since you filed it as a preliminary plan, obviously gives you the preliminary plan protections you get for a minimum of six months from any kind of zoning changes, which aren't proposed at this time, but that's just an extra that you get by filing it as a preliminary plan. That being said, I'll let the, I'll let the rest of the members of the board ask questions if they have any questions.
So, Roy, getting back to what you were just spending most of the time on as far as the paper streets and existing owners needing access to that. If we take a look at, which is, I believe it's southwest here, the first paper street, Situate Street, that kind of runs through lot one and lot two.
Yes.
So is it my understanding that those two lots are not buildable because Situate Street needs to be built?
No. So what town council has advised us is that the case law, his read of the case law is that as long as there's a proposed roadway, which eventually, when it gets built, will provide access to those other third-party lands, then that's met the requirement under modern subdivision control.
Okay, so if somebody, and this is all, because I don't know, you mentioned there's somebody out here that does own, but I'm just using this as a hypothetical, so this coming off of this Columbus Street, if back here, folks have access to Columbus Street, they don't necessarily need access to Situate Street?
Right. Under current subdivision control and case law, they only need access to a public way at one location.
Okay, so what happens to all these plans with Situate Street? Does that just go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that said simply, to get to that point with legal agreement of all the parties may take a little bit of time.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll focus on a little bit of time, but that's the direction we're heading in. We would like to avoid this problem altogether. I think it's still in the works to try and get a document signed by the two primary landowners, which are the applicants here, as well as that third-party landowner, as well as the planning board, saying that we will guarantee that whatever, and I don't know what the legal wording needs to be, but basically that we will guarantee that that third-party landowner that's not party to this application will, at some point in time, if they still own the land, be given access to that property.
So in this area, all in here, the only one that is just one owner, other than?
That's what we've been told by the assessors office. There's more than 1,000 little lots theoretically in that property.
Yep.
But there's at least one and potentially two. There's one piece of property that the assessors are having trouble finding if there is a third-party owner.
Right, right, okay.
So there may actually be two.
Okay.
But in each case, it's, I think one of them was six 5,000 square foot lots and one of them was eight, eight 5,000 square foot lots or something like that. Was it four?
Four and eight, yep, 12.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Anyone else? Patrick, any questions on your end?
No, no, as I said, it's our mine, it's pretty straightforward, just to take this down and turn it into a full A and R plan and get it back in front of the board.
Okay, Janelle, any questions from your end?
Just from what I, you know, I have so going back to what you were saying about lots one and two, with the Situate running through them as a Form A lot or as a Form A plan, then that, that piece of Situate would be abandoned, so to speak, on the plan and then in conjunction with the greater mutual release document that we're working on. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It would certainly enhance that position if you filed a, let's call it an updated preliminary plan that showed just a outline layout of Columbus Ave, that Columbus Ave actually is going to run through its relocated, however you relocate it, through that neck out to Central Street. So it's clear that as you head back, there's actually access out to the public way. Again, the planning board has no problem signing that based on what we've been advised by town council. What we want to avoid is after we sign it, someone files a complaint in court because of that and because of that, that background language. Because once it gets to court, we're talking literally years these days. Even for a finding, a directed finding from a judge is taking two and a half to three years right now. We really want to avoid that, so. None of, that doesn't serve any of us well. That costs the town money in legal fees, it costs applicants money in legal fees. It detracts from a well, you know, well-planned and well-engineered development plan, because theoretically, that would hold the whole thing up. And again, I think the easiest way, based on, and I don't want to speak for what the title guy thinks he found, because I think he's incorrect, but I'm not an attorney, and I assume the attorney that reviewed the research from that title search feels that he has to have a written document releasing that language. So if we could get that done, certainly, then that whole issue goes away. Anyone else? So I guess, all that being said, Patrick, I think if you were to file that as a form A request, pretty much as it is here, I don't see anything else really needed.
Yep.
And then we should be good to go.
Yep, we'll get this turned right into a full A and R plan and get it back in.
Some other, some other ongoing advice, which I think you've already picked up on, is that however the roadway's interior to this end up getting laid out, we would prefer everything, obviously, meet current roadway standards with intersection angles and all those kind of things. Other than that, I don't have anything, anyone else? Again, one more time around the board, any other comments, questions? Okay. Okay, thank you, Pat. So next on the agenda, there's an informal 74 East Street feasibility plan. The only guy I see here is you, Patrick, is that you?
That's me.
So, God, you got an extra copy of that one, because that's not in the tab here either? I'm sorry. There's two tabs that are stuck together here. It is there. So this one, I had a, I had a brief discussion with Mr. Jacobs.
Mm-hmm.
So based on all of the information I could, I could find and the information that's been provided and a little further research, in terms of strictly technical terms, it does meet the requirements for a state law.
Yep.
The issue with the several different easements and the drainage and all those other kind of things would create a few sticking points, but those would have to be addressed to make certain that, because I think the town has an easement somewhere out there towards the street.
Yeah, so there is a drain pipe that comes off of East Street, goes down beside number 74, and we're showing a proposed drainage easement over that existing pipe where it crosses this lot. And then there was a, apparently, an old right-of-way easement, which we're tending on relocating around the proposed area for the house. I know those are the two easements that I was aware of on that property, two issues.
Is the, is the pool actually, I'm assumed this was located on site, or is the pool actually installed directly on top of the pipe?
Yeah, I mean, that's assuming that pipe actually goes straight.
Okay. Do you know where the outfall of the pipe actually is? Is it at the property line or does it go further back?
I'm not sure. I think it is kind of like right at that corner.
Okay.
And obviously, I imagine that's something we would definitely have to verify.
Yeah, so I mean, in terms of all of the technical requirements under the state law bylaw, it appears to check all the boxes.
Yep.
Acknowledging that, given all of the constraints, or potential constraints there, including the, whatever work at to be done by Conservation Commission, would have, would have to wait to see what they said and whether or not they're going to allow a building there. But I don't, from a planning board standpoint, at this point, I don't see any issues with that.
Yeah.
So my suggestions would be to take the, the office has a one-page document for the bullets for an estate lot. Check each one of those and those that require deeded documented. I did look at the registry of deeds, it appears fairly clear that's been in common ownership since before the date on the, on the bylaw, but you should provide a deed back to, before the bylaw, so you meet that date. And the other things, when you actually file, if you do, go ahead and file. Look through the other, the bullets on that, on that one page. In fact, I can email you that one page. I've cut and pasted it out of the subdivision, or out of the zoning bylaw, rather, onto a single page, so it's pretty easy to do it. Check through the bullets. I believe from a cursory view that this, in fact, does meet those, so. That being said, I'll go That being said, I'll, I'll go to the, the board members to ask any questions if they so feel they would like to. All right, I just, I'm, it looks like, and I'll acknowledge right out of the, right out of the gate that the, the overlays you pull up on the, on the, on the town website, on the town maps are not always obviously survey as accuracy, but it, it does appear that everything slopes pretty steeply off to the back once you get what I would gauge from looking at this and from looking at those maps slightly behind the house. So there, there shouldn't be any drainage issues. I mean, everything's gonna end up in the wetland.
Right.
How that, how that gets handled through conservation, we'll leave that alone.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't appear that, that putting the driveway in and, and provided you address the, the town's easement as well as that, that right-of-way that, that's currently shown on old plans, I guess, I don't see any issues there. Those, those seem to be about the only two stumbling blocks that I can see, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was just for that language on the, on the original plan.
Yeah. Is there a path along Wetlands Edge, along the river or something there? What is that? Do you know?
Where's that?
Where that, where that?
That ten foot?
Right-of-way thing is?
You know what? I was talking ahead about that and I, I think it was just put there for access from one side to the other at one point, whether it was to, you know, go up to, to the woods or whatever. I'm not sure. It's just, it was just there, a ten-foot wide right-of-way to cross the property.
All right, I'll leave that up to, for you guys to resolve and I think given that we're, from a planning board standpoint, in terms of an A and R for an estate lot, I think, I think we'd be okay if you just provide that, that formal piece of documents that shows it's been in common ownership since nineteen eighty-six, I think it is, but. I'll email you that, that one page anyway, so it's, it's nice and clear.
Okay, great.
That right-of-way derives only from the plans. If there's no separate writing that speaks to it?
Not that I'm aware of. And actually, yeah, I, I think that's what it was. It was showed on the original plan. I think it's just referencing the deed. And that's why it was, it actually shows approximate location on the original plan.
Okay. Okay, I think we're all set with that then. Thank you.
Great.
Isaac Sprague.
Isaac Sprague.
Friendly. Why don't you come up and grab a chair at that table if you would?
If you want, if you don't have, I need some extra little copies.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief. I just, John and Peg Bolsma that live down at seven twenty-five Pond Street had come in with this subdivision plan years ago with the idea the lot to the right-hand side was given to their one daughter. And their other daughter Lynn was gonna go on the lot out back, which is the one in yellow. Lynn moved up to Alaska. John moved up to Alaska in many years have passed. And now John is ninety years old and Peg is in her eighties and Lynn is gonna move back from Alaska. Actually, she's in Utah right at the moment, but anyway. We have this one lot subdivision that was approved a long time ago with a driveway going in. It supported just that lot. The other two houses in the front were already pre-existing houses. And I'm just looking for the best way forward to be able to build a little house on the back of that house lot. I don't know where they'd have to be on the process.
So the, the lot was created after, after nineteen eighty-seven when we adopted the estate law bylaw, so technically it doesn't qualify.
Isn't a state law?
Isn't a state law. And additionally, it's got a second problem in qualifying for an estate lot in that any lot in a, in a wellhead, a well-protection district in a zone two district requires basically twenty percent extra land over and above the lot size listed in the zoning bylaw. And since it's only one lot, that would add on to the eighty-eight thousand. It would make it like a hundred thousand. So the, I, I think the, the options are, and, and there's an issue here, which I, I think, I think we'll choose to ignore, and that is that when this lot was approved, that was approved as, with a covenant signed that it had to remain in common ownership with the applicant Bolsma property. According to the current assessors' records, those two properties that have different names on them in the assessors' office, they both have Bolsma, but they're not the same names anymore. They changed sometime after this was approved, according to the assessors' records. I haven't had a chance to ask them to verify that, that, that the, the two owners have, have different titles to the, to the assessors' records, but the bills, according to the assessors' office, have different names on them for the, for the property. I forget which property the, the Bolsmas currently owned on the street.
They, they own the, the property to the left-hand side of the street.
Seven twenty-five, right?
Seven twenty-two. The, the one to the right-hand side of the street was their daughter's property and their daughter, years later, went through divorce and moved.
But the, the problem we have, and I, I think, I'm not sure that it makes any difference now of, since it is a single lot, it's not like a bunch of different lots were sold off out of a covenant. It's only one and it was a one lot subdivision, so I don't really see any major constraints here. But the, the problem technically, if you, if you want to understand it, is that the subdivision of land says John H. and Margaret Bolsma, James B. and Ellen J. O'Connell. Those are the applicants. The requirement of the covenant is they remain in common ownership with those owners. And, and the, the seven twenty-five property and the lot two property don't have the same name on them. So.
Is one the, is one John and Peg and one just John?
I believe so. That sounds right.
Yeah, I, I think what happened is there was a little swi, see this like apostle A and apostle B? There was a swapping around with one of the neighbors and some of the stuff who were.
Which I believe were the O'Donnells. I believe the O'Donnells at one point were the owners of seven thirteen. And they had to swap a triangle of land to get enough frontage for seven nineteen to be a legal lot.
Yep.
With its own frontage.
Be honest with you, it was, uh.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't involved in any of that stuff. I'm just, Lynn, I went to school with their daughter that's in Utah. She wants to move back here to try to help her parents, as I said.
So.
She's ninety, so she, she asked me what she'd have to do if they were gonna try to build a house for her and her husband on that lot. And I said, I'm going to the planning board on Monday on something else. I'll ask some advice that's kind of an extent in my involvement.
So I'll ask the fire department what their current requirement is, but since the, the buildable portion of the lot is clearly well over two hundred feet off the road. I believe the current requirement by the fire department is that the, the roadway be a minimum ten foot, the roadway, because it will be, it will be waived to be a one lot subdivision staying in common ownership with the, with the landowners of lot two. That it go beyond the, the two lot lines generally in the vicinity of where the buildable portion of the lot is, which I'm assuming looking at this, it's probably dead center because that looks like the high land in the lot. And that it have a turnaround suitable for a fire truck to turn around. And that when the roadway construction is done, two feet either side of that ten-foot roadway, be, be built up with gravel at the level of the roadway so that if, if a truck has to get in and an ambulance has to get back out, there's enough room for that to happen.
Okay.
I believe that's all that needs to be done, but we can ask the fire department officially for that. And the suggestion would be to, to file a revised one lot subdivision plan based on what's here. Just extend the roadway far enough so that it's more in the vicinity of the house because right now it doesn't even extend. I mean, it's a hundred and seventy-five feet long per the plan, but it doesn't even get more than seventy-five percent down the road before it stops you. So they're gonna want to see it get down beyond the lot lines and have a, probably a T turnaround. Maybe just a single turnaround, something that's suitable for a fire truck to get in and out of.
Yep.
And the construction of the driveway such that in an emergency situation, a fire truck could pull off to the side and allow a, an ambulance or other vehicle to get in or out. On a two-hundred-foot roadway, under current fire standards, there's gonna be a truck park partway down that roadway, a pump and truck with hoses running along back to the street. We need to be able to get a second vehicle by that.
So do we want the pavement wider or the two-foot shoulder on each side? I, I think I was listening to that.
The preference, I think the preference would be because of the relatively small amount of time that would be needed is the pavement would be ten to twelve. I, I think they're willing to, I think the fire department's willing, the public safety officer indicates that as long as there's a built-up shoulder either side of about two feet of compacted gravel. And that nothing is planted in it, that a ten-foot wide paved road would be suitable. I'll, I'll provide him a copy of this and, and ask him to, for his comments and see if that's consistent with what the agreement that we've reached sometime back. The other agreement that we reached is the addressing, regardless of what the name of that is.
Yep.
The name of that will have to be, or the address assigned to that would have to be maybe seven twenty-seven, I'm, I'm in the wrong direction. Seven twenty-three Pond Street. Because they don't want private driveways, private roadways, one lot subdivisions and all those kind of things to have.
Have to find.
Their own name because they don't show up in the public roads list. So down the road a ways, some new firemen may have trouble finding where, and it's already a problem because on the plan, it's Harmon's Way. There's documents later on in that that call it Isaac something, Isaac Sprague Drive and.
Yes, yep.
They want the, the number that, that they go to on an emergency. They want it to be where they enter the public way, which in this case would be between seven twenty-five and seven nineteen Pond Street.
So just procedurally, is all, what would I do? Would I?
Fire a subdivision modification to, to, to show the change in the roadway layout.
Yep.
I don't see any reason why you can't take that detail that's off to the side.
Yep.
Add the two-foot of compacted gravel way and show that with, with as clear as you can show it. I, I mean, it doesn't have to be, I don't think we need anything more than that.
Okay, yep.
And it, it should reference as a modification to the subdivision approved, August twenty-third, nineteen ninety-three. Needs to reference the book and page where it's recorded. I'll let any other members of the board have any questions or comments, feel free.
Now, would that have to be a plan by Mr. Seagris or could I have some?
Doesn't have to be.
Okay, I don't, I don't even know if he's around anymore.
Well, the only issue with Patrick.
He's out in Seattle.
So, so I don't know Patrick's position here, but I understand what he does for a living, so. My, my comment would be you'd only have the same issues of, of, if you will, using this as a basis for another plan done by a different surveyor slash engineering company as to what they feel their rights are to use that. It's a recorded document.
And I think if they're only changing some details on it as opposed to certifying the survey and all that, maybe that'd be.
Uh, I, I'd leave that up to whoever's doing the work.
Yep.
Because they have to put their name and stamp on it, which is what they're willing to do. Uh, we're not gonna question that, but with his name and stamp on it, if something's wrong, we're gonna go back to him when it comes to construction time.
Sure.
So how much site work they need to do to be able to feel comfortable and put their, their John Henry on there, taking the responsibility, that's up to the individual engineering outfit involved. You know, whatever company he's working for, it's whatever their standards are. I would say it wouldn't be safe just to take a photocopy of this or erase the other stuff.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just.
It's somewhere between that and.
And a whole.
A fully engineered plan out in a, a virgin site that's got nothing other than what you have to do in the site to do it. It's in between there somewhere. If you can contact Mr. Seagris and he has any records, that's a long time ago, but.
Yeah.
It, it's up to you guys how you handle that.
As I said, I went to school with Lynn. It's been an awful long time. It was, thought I'd try to help you. And I really do appreciate you guys taking a minute to talk to me.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
We have anything else tonight, Doctor, we need to look at?
No, I hope so. Is there even? You still see it or?
Snow's Lane. Did that get on there?
No.
No? I thought I saw it on the agenda.
What else is there, Patrick?
It is, it is Snow's Lane. It is on the agenda about a name change.
Yeah, the name changed.
Um, that's been on there for a while.
Snow Lane to Andrews Way?
Yes.
So our comment to that is.
Versa.
Our, our comment to that is, my view of that is based on the advice we've received is if you just wanna to file a, a document with us requesting that you change the name to Andrews, Andrews.
It's the other one around.
I'm sorry, Andrews Way to Snow Lane, then I'll say we'll approve that. The caveat being that we are gonna be required that that have a Plymouth, Plymouth Street address. On, on, on paper, it can be called Snow Lane, but from a, from a purpose of emergency response and, and mailing address, it's, it's gonna have to be the, the number in between Mr. Snow's current house and the, uh, but it to the South's house.
Right.
Wasn't the discussion that we had saying that it has to be something rear?
Uh, fire department has said their preference would be just a, a number in between.
I'm simply worried that it is officially Andrews Way.
Right. So he can file a document requesting that they be allowed to change the name that was approved on the subdivision plan to Snow Lane. Just a letter, I, I would say is, is enough to do that. But I did have a discussion with Deputy Fire Chief.
Yep, I, I was there when you were having the discussion. You know, but the, I think it runs into a problem if, on how, how reference on the assessors' records is what it officially has to be.
They have lots of those. The, the address is one thing and the street name is a different. I, I don't see any problem with that. We have that in all one lot subdivisions. All one lot subdivisions have a street name. And a good number of those have the addresses being from the main street they come off of.
Okay, I, I.
That's, that's, and it's been stressed by fire chiefs in Massachusetts, which was parroted down back through Craig as the deputy fire chief, that the fire departments want to stop seeing roads that don't exist on public roads lists with addresses that can't be found when you plug them into anything. They want a street number that's between existing houses so they know right where they have to go.
So the street number would be just the number between the two on Plymouth Street, but it wouldn't reference Plymouth Street?
No, it would be Plymouth Street.
It has to be Plymouth Street. Like a street name and then a different address name.
All one lot subdivisions have that. The fire department standard based on the recommendations from the state fire chiefs association is that all access ways from the public way should be listed and numbered as, as a number off of that public way.
So why, so why? Because Snow is not going to be.
It's not gonna be a public way. It's not even gonna be constructed. It's not gonna exist on paper.
It's a driveway.
What's, that's, it's not even the driveway.
Yeah.
So why do we?
The lane is down the street.
Now, I could put aside at the end of my driveway that says Lyons Place, you know, Rob Av. Why would I even bring it to the board? Right? Is that, am I? Right? Is that, am I, am I missing something?
Well, I, I think their original intent was they'd like to have an address, Snow Lane, but we can't let them do that. We, they can change the name, and I, and I think, I, I'm sure Lindy Snow would understand why, because he's been part of the discussions we've had in the past with, with the, the Deputy Chief, as we've kind of gone over this issue. There's eight places in town where there's addresses off a public way that you cannot access from the public way. There's three other addresses where they have one-lot subdivisions that are not visible from the public way. That have addresses for the, for the one-lot subdivision road name that looks like a driveway, and there's no number there.
Right.
And it's not listed in the public, the public roads database that the town has.
I, I get that part.
The practice seems to have been, for example, just going back to what we were just talking about, you've got this Lot Two in the back there that was apparently going to be accessed by Harmon's Way, which is a, apparently a, according to the plan, it was a-
A one-lot subdivision.
Right, well, a 10-foot by 175-foot paved driveway.
Right.
Okay, so I, I agree with what Rob is saying. Why are we going to make the confusion and just not, if you're going to consider that to be 723 Pond Street, then why are we talking about Harmon's Way? If that's, if that's the way it has to be.
That would take a change in your zoning by law.
The by law and the rules and regulations require that all streets approved under subdivision control have a name.
It's not a street.
Well, it is legally.
Well, yeah.
They're creating a legal frontality.
It's a technicality, but legally, legally it is.
Sexton Way, Marlin Way.
Alyssa Way.
There's a bunch of-
Familiar with how we've done over the years.
Yep.
But they all have numbers. Sexton Way. It's numbered Sexton.
But those were in some of the, those are some of the ones on the list that Craig gave us that are creating a problem with the fire department. Sexton Way is not listed in the public street record. It's a one-lot subdivision.
As goofy as it sounds, just when you plug some of these streets into Google Maps, they don't come up.
Yes.
Right.
And the ones that are most dangerous are the ones like off of Plymouth Street.
Oh, yeah. Apple, watch it.
If you come down, if you go down Plymouth Street past the Y on the left, there's that huge wetland meadow, or whatever you want to call that, that's, that's after the last, I think it's the, the house that's, that's after the ice cream stand. In between there, there's a long stretch of wetlands, as you head up to Bridge, Bridge Street.
Yep.
There's four addresses that, Plymouth Street addresses, that are 600 feet back that are accessed off Bridge Street. That drives the fire department nuts when they have a call. Because the firemen are trying to figure out where the hell is whatever number Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
Because when they go by number X, the next number they get to is Y. There's nothing in between. And they've got a number in between.
Yeah.
So we've agreed to let the public safety officer of the fire department currently, Deputy Chief Windsor, to, to give us the standards they want to use, and they, they're going straight with the standards from the, as I understand it from the discussion with, with Deputy Chief Windsor, they're going with the standards that the Massachusetts fire chiefs have adopted to try and make sure that at least if the fire department gets to the right number, they're going to be right where the house is.
So, I mean, you, you know, and as far as like, you know, this case in particular goes, I mean, really, you know, he can apply for the name change. It's not going to show up anywhere.
Well, I mean, it could show up on a deed if he wants it to be on a deed, but I, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know the intent there.
Right, okay. Because like I said, unless, unless he was going to do an actual modification, to file, plant the registry of deeds, so it actually said Snow Lane on it.
Yeah, I mean, he could do that if he wanted to. I don't, I don't see any need to do that.
Right.
Because again, it's, it's not going to become a public street, and he's not even going to use that, that paper street as was laid out, because that, that street is down near the property line of the abutis.
Yep.
During the original subdivision hearing, we discussed with, with Lindy how we wanted to access that, and he at one point was talking about building a, a one-lot subdivision roadway, and then acquiesced later on when he realized that that was going to cost a ton of money. And he says his driveway already goes to that house.
Right.
If, I don't know if you're familiar with his property, but if you walk behind his house, you come, you walk right up to the new house, it's right off the end of the driveway.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why the roadway easement was on, it was to follow his driveway. So he didn't have to touch the stone wall on, on Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
That was the thing, we didn't want to touch the wall.
So off of Oak Street, right, what we talked about earlier, we have an existing house that's got an 80 Oak Street that sits in the back.
Yes.
Or in the middle. So we're dividing this up and putting two of the houses in there.
Yep.
What are those addresses going to be?
I'm assuming the one that's on Oak Street will have an Oak Street address. The one that's currently 80 Oak Street, that's going to have to have an address off the new street, which will be a public way.
Okay, so that address will change to Hidden Oaks, or whatever it is. Okay.
It does have to change.
Okay.
All right. That makes sense.
So I, I, I can take that back to Lindy Roy, and he can decide what he wants to do with it then.
Yeah, I mean, he's more than welcome to give me a call if he wants to discuss it. I, I did discuss it with him briefly sometime back.
Yeah, but like I said-
Not more than sometime back, but it's before the pandemic, because he hasn't, he hasn't basically been out of his house, except for a brief discussion I had up on 33 Morris Ave with him.
Yeah. But the, but at the end of the day, he's going to have a Plymouth Street address on that lot anyways.
Yes.
Pretty simple.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
Ladies?
I'm sorry, Sheila?
No, that's okay.
Okay. So we did, I did pass out in part because of the, the question tonight about that lot that has legal frontage. So theoretically, it looks like a Form A lot on that Oak Street subdivision.
Yep.
If you look at that handout that, that was put on the table before we, before the meeting tonight that discusses the A and R and the requirements to meet an A and R plan, there's three steps you have to meet. Clearly, this doesn't meet those three steps.
Right.
Anyway. So I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more?
One second.
So that's a Yeah, motion, O'Belcher.
O'Belcher.
Second leery. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. We'll call that a unanimous vote of all members present voting six in favor and none opposed. Thank you all. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.